Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Elena? The October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Long Hill Planning Board is called to order at seven thirty-seven P. M. Would someone read the announcements? Who's gonna do that?
I can do that. A call to order and statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting, hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to Echo Sentinel newspaper, by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Point number two, standard board procedures, any hearing conducted by this, by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff, announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past ten thirty at any regular or special meeting, hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting and hearing to a later specific cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices, all in attendance are asked to mute cell phones and any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Point number five, pledge allegiance, please. All rise. All rise. Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, I'll conduct the roll call. Mayor Lavender?
Present.
Committee man Ray?
Praising.
Thank you. Miss Dill is absent, Mr. Hands.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't see you sneak in. Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Jones, present, Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Mr. Sandow, Chairman Sandow, you have a form.
And for the record, note that the Planning Consultant is here, Liz Lahaney, and our attorney tonight is?
Chris Sobieski.
Chris Sobieski.
Phil Young for Mr. Steve Warren.
The first item on the agenda tonight is the resolution for the Parisi subdivision, application twenty-three dash oh seven Papa. Does anyone have any comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, I have something. My apologies, let me get the microphone closer to my face. So, earlier today, I was informed by Mr. Flynn, who often covers your meetings of my office, that our, our office and the applicant's attorney have been going back and forth on some language related to condition number seven. And I know Board Engineer Voich was involved in these conversations as well, unfortunately, he's not here tonight, and I was hoping he would be so we could, he could vouch for any of what I'm saying. But as I understand it, there was some language suggested by the applicant's attorney that both my office and Mr. Voich's office is okay with including. And if you would like to, Mr. Chairman, I could recite for you condition number seven with that additional language, just for.
Yes, please, because we're gonna have to vote on it.
Right, absolutely, so, this is again, the condition number seven, it should be on page sixteen of your copy of the resolution that you all have. It should read as follows, the applicant shall, as a prerequisite, prerequisite to the board signing the subdivision map, either A, establish a homeowners association or similar private mechanism for the maintenance of the stormwater system, subject to the review and approval of the board professionals, or B, obtain a formal commitment from the township committee for the township to take responsibility for the maintenance of the system. Nothing herein shall be interpreted to require the township to accept such responsibility. I apologize if I jumbled that up at all, I'm looking at the red line copy here, so that is the suggested change, and as long as the board is okay with it, motion second of all those members who are qualified to vote.
Would you read that again?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, hold on. The applicant shall, as a prerequisite to the board signing the subdivision map, either A, establish a homeowners association or similar private mechanism for the maintenance of the stormwater system, subject to the review and approval of the board professionals, or B, obtain a formal commitment from the township committee for the township to take responsibility for the maintenance of the system. Nothing herein shall be interpreted to require the township to accept such responsibility. So essentially, the way this is worded, before the board would sign off on the final subdivision map, the applicant would have to establish a homeowners association for the maintenance of the stormwater system, or have the township accept, you know, basically take ownership of the stormwater system and have the township manage it.
And both you and the applicant's attorney are aware that that's a subject of an ordinance that's currently working its way through the township committee?
I'm being made aware of that for the first time, I'm just more or less reporting on what was reported to me earlier today by the board attorneys who typically cover this board more often than I do. The board's of course, under no obligation, if they want to wait it out for another month, just if they have questions about this suggested condition, but we'd receive this additional language, maybe a couple hours ago, actually, from the applicant's attorney, so.
Brendan, you want to talk about this?
I mean, you're right, Dennis, we have an ordinance that's, that's making its way through the township committee right now, I mean, I think I was probably the most, the vocal about this particular subject, but given that we have the ordinance now and some clarity, I really don't have an issue right now with, with what is, with what's being suggested.
Okay.
Well, I think that this language covers it, but that's up to the board members as to whether or not the, we've got enough notice on this wording change.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other changes to the circulated version? Don?
I had just two that I sent over to.
He wanted.
It was on the, the Parisi application, I, I can't recall, because I sent it via email, there was some inconsistency with just how the, the acreage of the site was being split up, it was more typographical, just needed to be changed on the Parisi application.
Stand by.
Not mine.
Sorry, I got all kinds of sound effects going on here. Item eleven, the acreage split.
This needs to be amended, I'd sent this all in the email, but I guess it didn't get to.
Mr. Richardson, when did you send that email?
I sent it out to Deborah, but she was out today, and then I think it got forwarded over to.
I forwarded it to Matt.
Or Matt.
Okay.
Oh, but Matt wasn't reading his mail today, because he wasn't in the office?
I'm not entirely sure one way or another, Mr. Chairman. There's nothing wrong with the board deferring this till next month, that's more or less what he anticipated happening anyway, and then at the last minute, we have the, the language from Mr. Zelli, so.
These are just typographical, this is not anything substantial, it's just for accuracy's sake.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think it's just amending.
If it's just, if it's just like a correction of factual information, I think that.
All right, let's, let's, let's put this off to the next meeting, just to make sure we get all the pieces put together correctly, and a new version issued to the board members.
Right.
What is the timing of the task of ordinance? Do you know?
Is that one for the next meeting?
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
Yeah, it should be by the next meeting, I would imagine, because it was like two meetings ago that we.
Yeah.
And when is your next meeting?
December.
Thirteenth.
All right, because I think our next meeting is the twenty-eighth of November.
Yeah, we've got another meeting.
Okay, so that'll be fine then.
Okay.
All right, so the Parisi subdivision is deferred to eleven twenty-eight.
And apparently, the applicant is under no hurry, if Zelli was still sending comments back today. The next item on the agenda is the resolution for the subdivision on Basking Ridge Road, application twenty-three dash oh nine, that's a much simpler one. Anybody have any comments on that?
Dennis, my only comment is I have not read it, therefore cannot vote on it tonight.
Say again?
I can't vote on it tonight, I have not read it, we got it late yesterday, and I've been too busy, so I will not vote on it, so say no.
Item sixteen, page five, typo in the first sentence, that's the only comment that Don sent. Sorry about that.
Want to shoot that elephant?
Yeah, I gotta figure out how to turn it off.
It's Jumanji.
Point four? Just, just to be clear, so that was paragraph sixteen on page five, board further notes that for both variants, relief pursuant to NJ, SA, et cetera, positive criteria is demonstrated, that's what it said? So the record reflects that change.
Mr. Chair, if there's no other comments, Mayor Lavender and Mr. File cannot vote on this.
All right, does anybody have any other comments or are ready to vote on this resolution? Go ahead and call the roll.
Committee man Ray?
Yes.
Wait, who moved it?
I'm sorry, didn't hear a motion.
So the.
Second.
Wait, who moved it, Mr. Hands? Committee man Ray? Okay. Motion?
Ray and Richardson.
Second. Committee man Ray?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Miss Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
I'm staying.
Mr. Jones, yes? Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the last item on our agenda is a discussion of the master plan comments from the public hearing on October tenth. And I'm going to read a statement here before we begin. On October tenth, a hearing was conducted pursuant to New Jersey statute, in order to give members of the public an opportunity to make comments on the proposed master plan, which will replace the nineteen ninety-seven master plan. As you know, this master plan has been developed by two advisory committees to the township committee, and by committees of this planning board over a period of ten years. This process has involved three planning consultants, several attorneys, almost every member of this and previous planning boards, and many citizens of this community who served in the advisory committees, or participated in the open public forums, or responded to the internet survey. Not all matters discussed over this period have been unanimously accepted by the board, or by some members of the public, and there are certainly differences of opinion. Divergent opinions have been received and have been debated, but we can only have one plan, and this is the plan that this board believes is the best alternative for the future of the community. That is the responsibility of this planning board. There have been some hard choices, but the choices have to be made to set a direction for the ordinances, which will be the final authority for development of Long Hill during the next decade. We are past the time when we can continue to debate divergent points of view. At the hearing in October, we heard comments from fewer than a dozen members of the public. Tonight, we will address those comments. The committee has classified the comments into three categories. The first category contains comments concerning trivial errors, typos, misplaced references, inconsistency between elements and the like. These comments have been taken into account, and the corrections have been made. We judge that these changes are insignificant to the intent of the master plan, and they do not change the master plan enough to trigger additional comments from the public. We appreciate those comments, but we will not discuss these minor changes. The next category contains those comments which repeat suggestions that were advanced and suggested over the ten-year life of this master plan effort, as described previously. To the extent that these comments concern matters previously put to rest, there is little value in repeating the discussions which previously led to the recommendations in the draft presented on October tenth. Mr. Richardson will review the comments in his, in this category, and will discuss the reasons why these matters in the draft will not be discussed further, nor changed, because they have already been exhaustively considered. A third category would have contained those comments which are new business, and which the board might consider tonight for significant change to the October draft. The committee has concluded that after the comment session at the last hearing, there are no comments which fall into this category, and there are no comments for further discussion by the board tonight. At our next meeting on November twenty-eighth, the complete final version of the master plan will be presented to the planning board for adoption, and then it will be published in all the usual places. And that is our agenda for completing the master plan this month, this year. Mr. Richardson, I turn the meeting over to you to talk about the comments that we have discussed previously, and that are now no longer on the table.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I wanted to first start just to put more of a footnote to the chair's proclamation of the hundreds of hours that have gone into the development of this draft and what we're about to finalize and adopt. I wanted to just list off a few of the key folks, I know I probably won't capture everyone, but these are some of the notable contributions that have been made over at least recent years' memory, I appreciate support from Mr. Hands in putting this list together, who's been instrumental, obviously, in the development of these drafts, if we've, as we've pushed this document forward. And if you will, Joel's up, just gonna read these names into the record, Tom Bear, Brendan Ray, Patrick Jones, David Hands, Larry Fast, Nick Mailer, Rob Lovrialo, Pamela Augens, Alan File, Tom Malinowski, Tom Gaskoff, Terry Carruthers, Mike Malloy, Guy Rushdow, and Dennis Sandow. So, special thanks to those individuals for all their efforts through these past recent years, there've probably been, been more that have contributed even before that, but I want to do at least acknowledge that going into it. So, the comments, as Dennis has very nicely summarized.
Can I make one addition to that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Chuck Renowitz was, was, was an early significant contributor when we first started the master plan discussion, so I want to make sure that we noted that.
Fantastic, yes, and anybody else, you can think of anybody that I may have missed in the early stages of this, the drafting of this.
Did you mention Tom Bear?
Yes, I did, right off the top. Good.
You say Malloy too?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, great, thank you. So going into the comments, what I attempted to do for, this is a great distillation process, we received over a hundred and sixty separate comments, a lot of them duplications, as the members of the public provided commentary in our earlier November meeting. The approach that we took was to essentially distill that out, as Dennis suggested, to get to a point where we were addressing really what we called category two comments. And the approach that I'm gonna take in, to save some time, is working with our master plan team, we came up with about six to eight different bullet points that I wanted to just distill out and, and comment on, because that's really what this all boiled down to. Without going into each separate individual comment, these, I think, capture what, how we're going to handle some of the different, more substantive comments that were received. The first one being the conservation element, we received a lot of comments with regards to the conservation element, we took a hard look at the conservation element, and are going to be making some modifications to that element that allow for really the, the addressing of issues that may not have been as accurate as they should be. Primarily around the issue associated with the environmental resource inventory. We recognize that this was not part of the scope of the master plan to do an E R I, and the environmental resource inventory is an important component of it, we're going to make a recommendation that that be at the fore of what happens after this plan is finalized, and we would place the environmental commission really in a position to hopefully be able to quickly, in priority, from a prioritization standpoint, complete that environmental resource inventory that's so germane. So we can more factually have information in that conservation element, again, I'll remind you that we can modify any of these elements at any time, these are not elements that are etched in stone. The environmental resource inventory can be done in a way that it could be used to amend the conservation element, or even a standalone document. So, we're, we're pledging to make that modification. The next, the next item associated with, oh, I just wanted to mention on the conservation element too, just staying on that topic, a number of items in that conservation element from earlier versions were put into other elements, specifically the land use element, which really is, again, the only required element of the master plan, it's where we put a lot of attention over the past year to make sure that was factually accurate, and was capturing, again, the vision of the town from a master plan standpoint. So we actually advanced a number of those issues. So we actually advanced a number of those issues out of the conservation element that we thought were significant. The last thing that I'll mention about the conservation element of significance, comments were made in regards to the need to identify contaminated properties in town. We've discussed this amongst the master plan committee on a number of occasions. We again considered that comment, and we felt very strongly that the accuracy of the information, even on the state database, leaves room for concern. Concern with regards to information about those particular sites. Now, there are specific sites that are well-known in the site, in the town, but again, it's really from our perspective beyond the scope of the master plan to really have to address those particular issues or details about those issues in the master plan. We are all very cognizant, and I would say that each and every member of this board is obviously concerned about the health and safety of each of the, the citizens of this township. So there are layers of government that will be overseeing safe and effective redevelopment or development in and around these properties to ensure safety with, starting at the local level, health department up through the highest reaches of government, the federal government as it pertains to the EPA with any sites that fall under the Superfund program. So that's how we are addressing that. We're not going to address it specifically in the master plan. Okay, so then moving on, we also got several comments in regards to mapping, and I'm going to let Liz, our planner, Ms. Lahany, to address that in a moment. So we'll return to the maps and, and some of the stormwater-related issues, as well as some of the zoning issues associated with the Barrett property. So we'll come back to that as it pertains to Millington. The flood wall. The flood wall was addressed in comments, in several comments. We're going to consolidate the discussion on the flood wall into a single section associated with, really, I believe it's section three of this document that will, is really capturing, capturing the status and some of the background of the town. It's going to be very much a factual description. We're not advocates of one way or another whether this flood wall is applicable to future design considerations to mitigate flooding. It's just simple fact that it was looked at at one time as a potential solution to flooding in the township. As far as references and other links to different ordinances, we are pledging here in this next draft to accurately reflect and reference ordinance as it pertains. And we did go through, and we appreciate the comments associated with making sure we were consistency, consistent with how we dealt with any of the bulk standards and other issues that were being made as recommendations. And I'll ask our planner to, to, to comment on that as well with respect to the fair-share Another comment was made with regards to some of the zoning. I will take this one on, Liz, as far as the, the Homestead. Homestead was mentioned, which by the way, we will acknowledge that Homestead is certainly one of the designated areas of the town, in, in the upfront section of the document. But right now, we're really going to address zoning within Homestead within the R-five recommendations, which we understand that R-five completely encompasses the Homestead There were several comments made that really, again, more generally are well outside of the overall responsibility of the planning board as well as the master plan. And where appropriate, we've either made modification in our draft document with regards to where issues really need to be resolved at a township level. As we're reminded, the master plan is seeking to put forth a vision, and it's a planning document with recommendations. Any of these particular zoning issues will be also addressed in future ordinance discussions with the opportunity for public input and commentary. One of the areas in that, too, came up with regards to, as just an example, is commentary in regards to the use of Blue Acres funding. Again, Blue Acres funding and other funding to purchase property to create and enhance our riparian buffer is clearly at a township level. We would only recommend in this particular document that all different resources are looked at if the township were to consider continuing in that particular program. Finally, and lastly, in the appendices, we included, as Mr. Sandow referenced, input from a survey. We have decided that it is appropriate, as what was requested, to include those results. Those results are not in any way, shape, or form designed to be scientific. These, this is commentary that was provided through a survey that was done, I believe, in twenty-eighteen, correct?
Make sure just to confirm.
Yes.
Apology versus the Thomas Bear one from.
Yes. Yes, it's the, the most recent one.
No, appreciate that.
Yes. Yes. Absolutely. And that kind of rounds out my overall comments, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lahany. Ms. Lahany, if you could speak to, I guess, first, the mapping and then to some of the zoning considerations we had.
Okay, thank you. So one of the comments was a request for floodplain maps and the indication that those floodplain maps had been produced in the twenty-twenty-two, December twenty-twenty-two document. They are not included in this, basically because of the strong recommendation both of the board engineer and the township engineer. And they both independently gave pretty much the same reasons. So I'll just go, go through them. One is that FEMA has one set of maps and NJDEP has another set of maps, and they aren't necessarily consistent. And the FEMA maps are important for homeowners looking to get flood insurance for their homes, and the NJDEP maps are important for a homeowner or property owner to know what can be developed on their property. But they're sort of, serve very, two different functions. And then to further complicate issues, in July, NJDEP passed the inland flood protection rules, which then has changed the floodplain again. And it's, it's changed on NJDEP maps, but not on the FEMA maps. And the FEMA maps were last updated in two thousand and one. So like I said, both engineers independently said, really what you should do is make a reference to those maps in the plan, which we can do, FIRM and FEMA. We also have, sorry, not FIRM and FEMA, the FIRM, which is the FEMA map, and NJDEP maps. There is a recommendation in the plan for essentially the township engineer to produce a more, you know, detailed, accurate map. But I think their, you know, advice to me, strong recommendation to me, is it's a very fluid situation. Whatever you put in the plan may not be accurate, and then when change, rules are continually to change, you don't want to have to amend the master plan every time they change.
Do I understand that both the state and federal maps have been revised within the past few years?
My understanding is actually the FEMA maps were never adopted, that they were revised in twenty-sixteen, but were not adopted. So the, the most recent FEMA map, FIRM map, is dated two thousand and one. And they, that, both engineers indicated that to me yesterday.
I'm, I'm leading to the conclusion that these maps can be adjusted at any time and probably will be within the ten-year span of this master plan.
Correct.
And so the, your conclusion and the engineer's conclusion is that putting them into this plan more or less might lock us into an obsolete view.
Correct. And as was said, to me, you'd have to amend, every time these rules came out, you would have to amend the master plan. And so they were sort of of the opinion that we make a reference to these maps, that if they change, then the reference is there, and that's fine, but not to have the maps themselves.
Now, with regard to any application for development in town, that application will always be screened by the town engineer and the town construction official to determine if it complies with the maps that are current at the time. So is there any role that the master plan could play to improve that process that is already in place?
Beyond the recommendation to have an updated map at the township level that's kept by the township engineers, that, that's what we have. I think that was the recommendation to have in the plan.
Thank you.
Liz, just one, that's consistent with other master plans you're seeing. You haven't had these maps and.
It's the first time I've heard this, and it.
I assume so.
Honestly, it makes sense, though, to be honest, because, and in particular, I will also say, the other municipalities I work haven't had as significant flood issues as Long Hill, where this is the number-one land use issue.
Okay.
And so.
So you're comfortable with the recommendation?
I am, because essentially, we're just saying, listen, go to the sources, and we're not trying to do, you know.
Dictate at the beginning when something's, will change.
Right. And, and, and any information that we had, like when we produced those maps initially, it's done like on LiDAR data, and it's not really very exact. And so if somebody is trying to use that information to, for whatever reason, it may not be accurate.
So with reference to those, then they, it's on their own volition to use those maps or whatever as, as they see fit at that time?
I think what was told to me or conveyed to me is essentially because of the sort of regulatory difficulty right now, probably every individual site is going to have to be surveyed, you know, when somebody comes in. They're going to probably have to hire an engineer and survey, you know, where exactly the floodplain is.
Okay, good. Thanks for the added commentary. That's good.
Liz, when you said reference, would that be providing a link to the?
I don't like to provide links, and the only reason being is that they, they get broken, you know?
So just see.
But yes.
FEMA website or?
Or, or we can, the FIRM maps have a specific, you know, citation.
Let's go with maps, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dennis. Sorry, Dennis.
I heard that.
Okay, so then I think.
So I think that is it for the zoning. The one thing I wanted to just mention real quickly, too, there was the comment on the stormwater plan. We've deleted reference to it in the master plan because it was not intended to be attached.
Right.
The stormwater management plan was recently adopted by the township committee in October, I believe. And so we have that. That isn't really necessary because that's going to change in a more regular cycle as we look to maintain compliance with the EPA permit.
Correct. And I think there was a reference in the conservation element, which was an outdated reference to a stormwater sub-element. And really what happened, I think, in the intervening years since the conservation element was first prepared, was that the municipal land use law changed what goes in the land use element. So now the land use element deals a lot more, particularly our land use element, deals a lot more with flooding than, you know, previously. So, and that changed in twenty-twenty-one. So that, what perhaps made sense, you know, several years ago to have a sub-element, it's now all in the land use element.
Right. And quite frankly, the new required climate vulnerability assessment that's now in our master plan that's required by law really takes on a number of those stormwater management-related issues.
Correct.
And then our sustainability element takes on a number of the green infrastructure-related recommendations. So stormwater is very prolifically addressed throughout this document, where, to your point, it was a sub-element a number of years ago.
Right. That's right.
Sounds good.
Okay, so zoning.
Zoning.
All right. So I think one of the questions or points was made, you know, listen, the purpose of the master plan is not for rezoning. And I would say that that is not the main purpose of the master plan. The master plan has many purposes, which are contained in the different elements. But when it comes to the land use element, that is the basis of your zoning. You can't have zoning without an adopted land use element. But I think also, I'd like to make clear that the recommendations in the land use element are just that, the recommendations. It, they don't, it's not an effective rezoning. We haven't rezoned these properties. And we allowed for a lot of flexibility because we understand it's a ten-year plan, and so we tried not to box in future township committee, you know, ordinance prepar, preparers to allow a certain flexibility to, you know, work with whatever conditions might exist in the future that we haven't anticipated. The other point I will say is, of course, that any ordinance, it has to be noticed. It had the people whose the property are impacted have to be noticed. There's a public hearing where people come and, and can voice their opinions. And then, of course, it would come to this board because it has to be reviewed for consistency with the master plan. So, you know, I just wanted to, I think, make that clear. Anyway, that's it.
Good.
Is that it? If you don't mind, I'd like to add a few points.
Okay.
Sure, please.
The master plan is not the definitive statement of what the town is going to do over the next ten years. I remind you that the last master plan we have in nineteen ninety-seven said, "We need a new town hall." It didn't say where or when. Three years later, the town purchased this property, and a few years later, we have a new town hall. The master plan simply said, "We need," because we didn't know, the master plan writers had no idea when or where that would actually happen. It happened that this lot became on the market, it was well-located, and the town snapped it up. Similarly, with the library. The library was too small, we knew that. It didn't have parking, we knew that. So the master plan said, "We need a new library," not when or where. Well, it turned out that the where was pretty obviously on this parcel when we bought it. And the when was based on the fact that the state came up with a grant program at the time. And when the state came up with a grant program, which was coincidentally a few years after the master plan was written, the library board jumped on it and got some funding to support putting a new library in. Now, we also said, "We need to cure the sewer system, which isn't big enough." And twenty-five years later, we're still waiting for that to happen. We've, the, the path that was chosen by the governing body, with a whole lot more advice and input than they would possibly get from the planning board, was that the best solution was to sell the sewer system. And that turned out to be a good deal because we got paid good money for the asset, and we're using that money to, to pay down all the other debt in town, which, over the long term, will probably be best for the town. But there was no way that a bunch of people sitting on the planning board in nineteen ninety-seven and their consultants could know what the fix would be for the sewer ban. So the, the point I'm making is that although it may appear to be vague, it simply recites the obvious that, of things that need to be done in town, and we should not fault the master plan for not being more specific. We cannot know how things will shake out. We cannot know how things will shake out over the next 10 years, and we have to simply leave a trail of hints that the governing body can follow and work on as the funds and the public pressures bear upon them. Okay?
Can I have some comments then?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. You mentioned Barrett's. And I so I think the way I'd phrase this is the consequences of affordable housing. Two areas. One, we split, what's written for Barrett, for Tifa in Millington was rezoned to town. Personally, I was all for it, personally. I know, you know, it was raised when we had the committee meetings and stuff, Brendan, I think, was spoke on this point as well to say, let's wait and see the consequences of some of the affordable housing before making some judgments. So I'd like us to rethink Barrett's. And I'd also like us to go back to the recommendation we had before about circulation. Let's think about doing a circulation study as a recommendation after some of the build-out that we're going to experience over the next few years. So those those two.
And quite frankly, those were already, those already have been considered and adopted. So that's why we we're not bringing those up.
I didn't know, you didn't say you said Barrett's. I don't know what you meant by that.
No, okay, so what I meant was, as an example, was zoning in that the whole idea behind Barrett's is we had already conceived was what we would call more of a transitional zone, away from something that was much higher density associated with a fair share settlement to something that was more reasonable as you transition to, you know, the other condominium development and then single-family homes along Division.
Oh, yeah, no, we did this. This is one of the first things we did 10 years ago.
Yep.
My point's as simple as this. I think we need to revisit point number two under recommendations for Millington. It says rezone with an overlay with a light into low-density townhouse development. What we discussed more recently was that we were going to put that, we consider a recommendation on hold until we saw the impacts of Tifa. So my suggestion is we strike it.
Right.
That's one. The second one was the circulation plan, because we haven't had one for many years. The recommendation that we had was, let's revisit that after the build-out as a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, and I think in that that circulation plan, there was commentary around the paper street issue, which is going to require is well beyond the scope of this master plan to have a full assessment of paper streets and how they might, may or may not affect circulation. But that's something, again, that can be folded in as a recommendation.
The other, the other thing that's important here is that the world changes. COVID, in the past three years, has, in spite of my best judgment, changed the way people behave. It's changed commuting, it's changed shopping, it's changed banking. Half the banks in town are closed. Half the barber shops are closed, half the pizza joints are closed. 10 years ago, we could not have predicted those things if we were doing a master plan, and we can't know what's going to happen in the next 10 years. What really will be the impact on commuting if electric vehicles really take off? And what will be the impact on our gas stations? We can't, we can't, we can't anticipate specifics. We can only hope that the governing body and and the developers, the development community, pays attention to what the public needs. I don't know if we're going to need more big house neighborhoods or more apartment house neighborhoods. I can't know that. A few years ago, we talked about a concept called Transit Village, where we would build a lot of apartments right near the train stations. And yet, with COVID, people stopped taking the train. So is Transit Village a dead issue? I can't know that.
I've got, I've got a point on Transit Village, but going back to my point, if I can.
Yeah.
What's what's the conclusion with Barrett's?
Yeah.
With this recommendation? Because I'm not, I'm not going to keep going backwards and forwards on emails and I'll discuss it and get it over.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know what you're referring to in regards to Barrett's. We're going to come up with, we're essentially essentially parking that issue. We're allowing for flexibility.
What does that?
Well, parking that issue, we're, just to your point, we're not going to address it specifically.
We do, though.
Right, we do. No, we we do. What we.
No, I'm talking about in this meeting. I don't know if it's the appropriate.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm, I'm saying, we've addressed it.
Let me ask that question. What's the next sequence of discussions? Because I've got a few other points that I've raised that I think we need to address. If we're not going to discuss, and then we're just going to go forward and vote on it, then that's not going to be good enough for me. I'm going to vote no. So when are we going to discuss some of these other points? Like Barrett's, what are we going to do with Barrett's?
As we discuss tonight.
That's what I thought. Otherwise, we're going to waste time.
If it isn't discussed tonight, then.
What's the point?
What's the point of having the 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 adoption meeting at the end of November?
Yeah, because I'm going to vote no for it.
Right.
So let's make a decision.
Over that one issue.
No, 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 I've got some other stuff. I obviously want to make sure we have a sensible conversation now or later. Not going to keep sending emails and nothing happens. So this point is something that I think has been raised by the public, something that members of the board, we agreed to this this point. I don't see what the difficulty is to have that discussion. And more so, point, I think it fits nicely in the concept of let's think about some stuff or put some stuff off to the future after we know more about the affordable housing impact, e.g., circulation plan, because we don't refer to it as a recommendation, and striking Barrett's, I would just strike the whole thing.
You could do that, but at the same, at the same time, though, you could reference the many discussions we had about the fact that the Barrett properties are a unique transition between the Cooper Lane townhomes and the Tifa apartments.
That's the whole point, the transition.
And the Barrett's properties were a whole group of properties that were certainly, in our opinion, in need of something. Because they're not, they can't continue where they are.
That's right.
It's a, it's a mess.
So how can we?
So that was, the logic was to include that. We could certainly say, we don't have to say we're going to rezone it because right now it's Zone O. But it's not on office use.
Right.
So we could, we could, we could leave it as it is, but put a footnote in there that's just for future discussion. The board still felt that it was, it was, it was a natural area for transition between between low-density townhomes and and high-density apartments. That's the whole point.
But we say rez, let me read it. Rezone O in Millington, which includes Barrett Roofing sites, permit median-density multifamily housing.
Folks, folks, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt only to point out
that we're rehashing a discussion that has been held over and over again during the past 10 years.
Correct.
And the conclusion seems to be a a hard one, but it is reflected in this draft of the master plan. There will always be disagreement. The fact that we are disagreeing over one small issue in a 200-page document doesn't necessarily mean that we need to bring it up and discuss it again. A lot of thought and a lot of effort has gone into this, and we, as a board, have an obligation to produce a master plan this year. And I ask you to set aside your differences of opinion and recognize that the greater good is to issue this plan. And and what you're seeing now is the result of a great deal of discussion in the past, and let's let it rest.
I disagree. So how can we not have a discussion and just reword some of these things relatively straightforwardly, as I may suggest, offer?
Well, do you have a proposal?
Yeah.
Just don't, what's your proposal?
Right, so what Alan just said, but consideration what Brendan has said in the part, not being on the spot Brendan, but we have discussed this a number of times. And I'm only supportive because that was our last discussion. Original discussion was exactly what was written. I had no issue, an issue what was written. I have an issue that we just changed it for purpose. And if that's not a purpose that anybody cares about anymore, then I believe it, as we're going to rezone it to the, the, I guess a few words, and I've got a few other things I want to add on some other places, but.
Liz, is there a middle ground on that?
Well, I mean, you could soften the language.
Thank you.
You could.
It's not that difficult.
Rather than rezone, just say, you know.
Potential for?
Potential after, after affordable housing, it's the impact in the area, and then consider rezoning at that point in the future.
But it certainly doesn't, doesn't weaken the position that the board's always had.
And it says that we recognize it as an area of interest, but we're not going to dictate today.
That's fine.
Well, there's a difference.
End of discussion.
That's perfect. I mean, and we know that it's an immediate issue because we know there's been a lot of interest in that property from a market standpoint.
Yes, and I have some very.
Let the market drive the decision.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, and then I also would like to.
Passing ordinance.
Let's move on.
Circulation plan, can we please add something about consider doing a circulation plan after affordable housing, all the build-out has been done?
Yes.
Very simple couple of lines is in there originally.
I would like to point out that every multifamily zone in town, the existing townhouse complexes, the existing department, apartment house complexes are all essentially spot-zoned at the time that a development was proposed for that property. And although it would be nice to get ahead of the curve, the fact is, we are more or less limited by what developers are willing to invest their money in. And if a developer comes and says, "I would like to do this," then the committee, the Township Committee, has to make a decision at that time on the spot that a zoning change is required in order to make, to allow this to happen. We've done it for the five or six or seven multifamily zones that currently exist. We have essentially spot-zoned the four affordable housing districts that that were identified three years ago, four, five years ago for the for the affordable housing settlement. And we will apparently have to continue to do that as as the circumstances come about, as developers show up with money in hand. And that's our plan.
Can I just go to another?
Yeah, please, let's let's finish up.
Actually, Dennis brought up one of the points, if I can, very quickly. Silly little point, Transit Village. We're both skeptical and supportive. What are we?
Yeah, and and that was one area that we, we got the comment and we very much agreed with the comment, so we didn't bring it up again in this forum, but I can, I can definitely tell you that the focus should be on the three assets that we have in this town. Is we have three train stations that connect us to one of the largest cities in the world. And we should acknowledge that. Now, is that an emphasis on Transit Village? I think we've decided to soften that a bit. It's, again, market-driven. We don't know what the future holds. We don't know the result of what's going to occur now as we recover from the pandemic. If we had written this plan three years ago, we wouldn't have even taken into account the huge drop-off in ridership.
Sure, sure. So are we skeptical or supportive?
I think we will tweak the language to make it supportive of, sorry, capitalizing on the assets of the train station.
That's it. We're not going to say Transit Village is a.
So they're consistent.
Right. Yep, because that that was a good comment that was raised, and we essentially absorbed it right into the text.
There's a couple of little silly things. One thing I have disliked for ages, self-storage. We don't show examples or such as's in many uses. But one we do do is self-storage facilities. Personal opinion, we can debate on the board opinion. I never want to see one in town, and I think they are a waste of space for what we have better things to do. Other places gets, I'd love to get self-storage facilities.
The the one place I'm going to challenge you a little bit is in regards to some of our most distressed properties in town, including areas that aren't going to be suitable for any form of development other than something like that. We have to be very careful that we make proclamations of never shall there be something.
No, I didn't say that. We say such as. We give example, explicit example, such as. I'm saying, strike the such as.
Gotcha.
Example, that's all.
Gotcha, just do a search. A search through the document.
There's only, there's a couple of places. It's easy enough to do. Just strike self-storage.
Yeah.
Very easy.
That's fine.
Next.
So you're not voicing that you're, you would be totally against, given the right circumstance?
I don't agree with, let's not suggest it.
Liz, that is section four of the land use, four dash 39, page 69, line 27.
Okay, that's where it is, right? Yeah, thank you.
There's not many examples, such as, very light on it. It's a perfect.
I got you.
Thank you. Silly little one, silly little one. We have a recommend, I'm trying to tie some of the recommendations or concept to recommendation. Sometimes we say there's a goal of this, that, we don't really, very simple example. Pharmacy, my favorite. I don't know why.
And just for clarification, we went over 150 line items, so, and that's including your submissions.
Yes.
Oh, I don't know. You, I don't, I don't know.
He mentioned right in the beginning.
Yeah, no, we went through every comment, including one from the town. We do listen.
All right, just want to make sure. Liz, thank you.
Okay.
All right, and let me just make sure. Because I wasn't sure whether you just, from the public and other other comments.
Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay. And one other thing, and maybe is that trail by rail concept that we've talked about many, many times. I think it's an interesting concept, and again, way back, I've gone through this enough times. Any reason why not to include it? Trail by rails.
I don't think so as far as a recommendation.
No, you mean like a rail trail?
You're talking about using the DOT right away in some regard?
Because I think it's personally, because you can walk between.
No, we've talked about this as being, especially from a circulation standpoint, really trying to connect the, at least the Millington, Sterling, and Gillette.
Right in the middle town.
I think there's a coordination with New Jersey Transit as well, because you're putting people right along a rail line.
Yeah, I mean, it's a concept that would, it's a concept that we've talked about in the, with this board before, and understanding the hurdles that would be required to get approval.
Rail trails are totally different. They take old, existing.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have an old, existing rail.
Again, I did speak to, you know, the story. If we could include that, that would make me happy.
Let me, let me tell you what we do have right now, and you tell me if that's okay.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so this is page 5-9, and it's recommendation 17, "Explore the development of a rail with trail system of easements along the New Jersey Transit rail line to link with the other parts of Long Hill Township Trail System, as well as providing a unique opportunity for connecting non-motorized transportation with public transportation, such as when a trail leads to a train station."
That sounds like the rail.
Yeah, it sounds very familiar.
Yeah, I know, I didn't write it.
Maybe my search didn't pick that up.
I think it's, I think it's familiar because you, I think you wrote it, David.
All right, I'll stop talking. And and thank you. Some of the other stuff you already commented on for the survey results and stuff like that. So let me just do a quick. I think I'm pretty good. So appreciate, actually, thank you for all that.
Yeah, others, please.
Yeah, one of the comments, by the way, I need to sign an affidavit. I don't know, I'll, I don't know if you guys have a draft one. I watched the whole public comment meeting, so I can sign whatever I need to sign. But one of the comments had to do with like the Sterling section, which is the bulk of the time I've spent in this plan. And I'll touch on the comment in a second, but it led me to the part that I think is relevant to the comment, which is 3.5, 0.8, 0.3. Liz, do you mind pulling it up for a second?
I have, can you tell me the page number? Do you have it, or now?
1-34.
1-34.
Part of this might just be my confusion, but.
Oh, is that from an old draft? Is that the land use element?
Do I have the wrong draft? I don't know. Do you want me to pull up the one from the website? Well, what do you, what do you have?
Well, because the the land use element is now chapter four.
Oh, okay. Well, let me read this language to you and tell me if it's the same language that's in there. Do you even have it up of what I'm about to reference?
I may.
Okay. A rec, under recommended action, under limited industrial district.
Right.
It says, "Create an overlay zone to permit specific uses and bulk standards, blah, 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 on Somerset Union and Essex Street to expand the SV zone." Then the next one says, "Remove one residential lot on Union Street from LI2 to the adjacent SV zone, where its residential use will be more conforming." I'm just confused, like those, we're talking about the same areas, I think, are we not?
Yeah, so it's, it's west of Maine, right? You have some of those light industrial.
Wait.
Let me, let me take that one.
Okay, west of Maine, because this says eastern.
There is a, there is one house on Union that is. that is accidentally mapped in the current industrial zone. It is a nuisance to have an old residence in the industrial zone just due to a mapping error. All that second piece of your question does is corrects that oversight and gets that one house back into the Sterling zone. The larger issue is putting an overlay on the entire industrial zone to allow those buildings to be replaced in time with commercial properties. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, well, I don't, yeah, I don't know that it's addressing what I'm asking, because if this is, if what you're saying is this should say west... I think in the current draft, it's west. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong draft. That's probably not helping my cause at all. So, okay, so then west number two, which it says west of Main Avenue on Somerset Union Essex Street, it makes sense, then, that we're talking about remove one residential lot on Union Street, because that's going to be to the east of Main, right? West, right? No, like, that's, remove one residential lot on Union Street from LI... Maybe we should indicate where that one residential lot that we're talking about is. Let me look through the document exactly, because I know what you're saying. But yeah, it's those properties to the west. I know. No, no, I know.
Teresa, let me handle that for you.
I don't think it requires handling, because I just think that, one, I'm looking at the wrong draft, and two, that I think that it's not... I'm just trying to understand which lots we're talking about.
Let me handle that, please.
Okay, sorry.
The answer to your question is, this is a master plan. The ordinance, the zoning map, deals with a lot-by-lot issue. We know there is a lot, and I think it's the first house on Union, offhand, I don't remember. But there is no point in getting into specifics. At one point, back in 2016, we were dealing with specific lists, and there were page after page after page of lot numbers that we could have inserted into the master plan, chose not to, to just allow the master plan to come up with a generic guideline to, quote, "straighten out" the mistakes that were made in the zoning map in the past. And there is one lot, and it's probably irrelevant as to which lot it is. And maybe there's one and a half. I think it's not, it's not something we should trouble ourselves with at the master plan level.
Yeah, no, I think if there's something inaccurate, I think we should trouble ourselves with it. But...
If you would like, I'll dig into the records, and I'll send you an address of the lot that was in question six years ago.
Dennis, after this, I will go pull up the correct draft, and I will talk to Don about what I'm trying to get at. Because I'm not trying, trust me, you know I don't like to get into the nitty-gritty. I would like to address one of the public's comments, and that's what I'm getting at. I will pull up the correct draft, and I will talk to you later about it. I don't want something inaccurate in the master plan. No, it's, and there is actually a map in this current version, on page 4-30, which should show you exactly what we're talking about. I mean, I can also just pass you my computer. No, no, that's fine. I'm fine. I'll be able to find it in just a moment. Thank you.
Any other comments that you'd like to make?
No, it sounds like the work's been done, and you guys are collectively comfortable then. And I think you're right, and Alan's right. If there's no other comments, or this is the time to raise them. And if not, I think we've been posted...
So we will be finalizing this document, and it'll be available shortly before our adoption meeting.
Let me address the calendar. Town Hall is closed next Thursday and Friday, which means we've got until next Wednesday, we've got six more working days to wrap this up. It is very likely that that will not happen. It is very likely that the master plan to be voted on two weeks from tonight will not be available until Friday or Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, at which point it will be emailed, and it won't come from the zoning office, because the zoning office is closed for a four-day weekend. The agenda for the meeting probably will not be published until Monday morning, again, because of the four-day weekend. Unless anybody really thinks that they need it on Wednesday so they can read it during dinner on Thursday, we will not attempt to get it out within the next six, seven days. Does anybody have an urgent need to see it before Thanksgiving Day? Good. Then anticipate a draft in your email, I'm sorry, the final version in your email on Friday or Saturday, and an agenda and any of the other stuff for the meeting to be published on Monday.
Can I make a quick, can I just ask a quick question? The version, hopefully, final, will you do a marked-up version as well? Could you send us a copy of that?
Yes, showing all the changes, yeah.
Would you mind, between what we see, the comments that you guys have taken on board? I've got a few just editorial-minded stuff that I'm going to...
I appreciate that, if you give it to me.
Yeah, so I'll give it to you. Just so I can just quickly whiz through it, if that's okay, that we have a mark. Okay, thank you.
We will have several proofreaders. You're welcome to join the proofreading squad.
I'm happy to proofread.
I mean, we're, yeah, I mean, but we have to go linear at this point with different versions, or we'll never get this thing to a final form. So that's the challenge right now, guys, is now we've got to get very small and linear as this document is sent to press.
I think for right now, if everything sounds like it's on the right track, and it's just hopefully, at this point, maybe just some silly grammatical stuff at most.
Right.
I'd like to think of it.
The only other announcement that I have before we adjourn is that in December, we have one meeting, and we will be back to normal business. We have an application for home office in Gillette, which we will be dealing with, and back to normal.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you mind if I just ask a question of Ms. Laheny?
Yeah.
Real quick. I'm asking for your permission here, the chair. You're the boss here.
Does it have to be done now?
I think it might be relevant to the adoption of the master plan. Unfortunately, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, and hopefully I don't have it. But Liz, would you describe any of the changes to the master plan from that first draft that went out for the first hearing to now as significant changes?
No, I think they're all what we have discussed here on the record. And some of what we discussed tonight was justification for why we're not changing things.
Right.
And then other, some other things are, as we said, softening, tweaking the language. But it is more tweaking the language to reflect, really, actually, what we had intended in the beginning.
Right, okay. Just want to make sure, because the reason I asked Mr. Chairman and other members of the board, if there were the changes between the first draft and now were significant as anticipated by case law, it would technically, it would probably require us to re-notice and basically go through the process again from step one for the master plan adoption. And if we didn't, the reason being is that somebody could challenge it later on down the fact to say they were denied on a D-variance, and that might help their argument. So, you know, just throwing it out there. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, just one last, last quick recommendation. The list of folks you read through earlier.
Yes.
I just wondered, is it worth just reaffirming with the folks that they're okay with the names to be on this document, to reach out to them? Because if it goes, then, I don't know, I'm going to assume most people will be okay with it? It might be worth just checking.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, no, I think that the typical protocol that I've seen on a number of master plan documents is the board that this lands with, instead of trying to go back in history and capture everybody. Because the problem is, is the potential for missing someone more than the people that we're noting?
Let me emphasize my point first. I think the boards and the committees and everybody serving in the public position, fair game. But there are some people that were on the master plan committee and stuff, half a dozen, if that goes. I just wonder if those folks are not on the regular business, maybe, here? Maybe it's just worth reaching out and just double-checking that they are okay with their names being used.
So you're more seeking to get permission for the people that we've put on record, that I read into the record, into the document?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to get their reaffirm. I hate just something to go around and they say, no, I don't want my name associated to this.
I don't, yeah, well, I'll have to, we'll have to consider if that's appropriate or not, but thanks for the recommendation.
Yeah.
I mean, I do want to acknowledge everyone, and it's, I'm more concerned about missing other people.
No, 100% agree, 100%. I'll give you some email addresses of people that are not volunteers, as elected volunteers, so...
Right. Good. Mr. Chair, I send it back to you unless there's any other comments, because I guess you ceded the meeting to me, and I lost total control of it. So I cede it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Alan.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Very good, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I'm very welcome.